It's 6 o'clock, we'll call the Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. Kirk, can please call the roll?
Marivka, Jones.
Here.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
Approval of the November 26th, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Not a motion to accept as presented?
Motion second.
Motion by Trustee Jones, second by Trustee March.
Jones?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Public comment. Come back to that, we'll move on to item number five. A Police K-9 Retirement Presentation. Chief Ford.
Hello, everyone. I just say, and I'll pass this around, so you can all look at it. In every good trooper's life, there's a time to leave with dignity. And with that, we have a foreign-looking friend who's never calls in sick, never files grievances, eats less than we do, doesn't like sweets very much, but been a good asset for our community since 2008, when we started our K-9 program. Back in 2006, when I first became appointed chief for Peatone, a lot of discussions came to my table about K-9, and actually, we did a lot of research, and we had a lot of discussions. And lo and behold, by the -- before you know it, it's 2008, and Agbar was an opportunity to be donated and trained for our department, meeting all the parameters that we want our K-9 to be. So, in 2008, we got Agbar, and we had to make sure that, first of all, that the trainer and the dog and the family get along, because it's important to the K-9 program in any police agency, it's also important, like with police agencies, that the family is behind him. And with Agbar, you need a family to be behind him, because he's there more than he's at work, you know, union contracts and all. So with that, Gary Miller and his wife and daughter became his family, and since '08, and he's been there for 10 years. He has dug up all her plants in the yard, has eaten every morsel food that's left on the counter. And I got to hear all the stories that Agbar did during life at the Miller household, but also to see the positives that he did with the police agencies for us and everyone else. So I'll just read this briefly. "Agbar was born in April of 2006, when he started working for the Peatone Police Department. During his tenure with the police department, he is recognized multiple times by the United States Police K-9 Association, certifying the top 10 of all the area canines in narcotics detection. Agbar also was a strong asset to many area police departments, including Peatone. Over the course of Agbar's career, he is responsible for largest seizure of marijuana in Peatone in history of 100 pounds. Agbar also located the largest money seizure in Cherokee County's history of $1.7 million that was hidden in a gas tank of a vehicle traveling to Mexico. He assisted state police with the seizure of 26 kilos of cocaine on a semi outside of Peatone Wilmington Road. He was recognized by the Forest Police Department in a formal awards ceremony for tracking and locating a homicide suspect as he fled from the scene was hiding underneath a car several blocks away. This individual had brutally stabbed his roommate because Agbar locating him became violent. A felon started taking off on the street. Because of Agbar's presence, he was able successfully end a standoff in Cherokee Key with an armed violent offender who was hiding in the wooded area." You know, when offenders see dogs, they seem to have a tendency to want to surrender. They don't surrender to police, but they sure in the heck respect the dog. I don't know whether that is. Particularly the barking and the teeth. We just gotta wear our police department, show our teeth and bark a little harder. Agbar and Officer Miller were able to successfully seize the largest gun and ammunition seizure in Peatone history. The ammo and guns were being transported by an individual who was heavily armed and was en route to a college campus in the southern region of the state. Because of K-9 Agbar's presence, the officers were able safely arrest and stop a possible violence from occurring. There are countless stories of Agbar and his handler Gary being called out at all hours of the night, anytime they would drop what they're doing, and sometimes drop their families and have to respond. And not all the times were the events that Gary and Agbar had to handle in the pristine weather conditions. I think if you're gonna call about the worst, coldest, wettest, muddiest, that's when the bad guys have to be tracked by K-9 at a more difficult time. I don't think Gary ever came in after a night of tracking with looking like he had not done anything, because I think they were both tired. But the important thing to recognize really is the invaluable asset he was to us and our communities around us, because we never said no, and he'd always go to work. So, after about 10 years, the breed of dog, you know, he's healthy. They do have some medical issues because they're climbing in out of the car. He's healthy, and I think he's probably gonna live a very long time, so he'll be living in the Miller household, eating cake, digging up, enjoying life, being screamed at by his mom and the daughter and Gary for not doing exactly what they wanted to do, but I think that's like us with our children. So why would it be different? So I like to do, and I pass this around, we have a -- instead of a plaque, we're able to give Agbar, K-9 Officer Miller, a glass memento. Says, "With great honor and recognition for your years of dedication to the village of Peatone. K-9 Agbar will be greatly missed by the Peatone Police Department. We wish you the best in your retirement." Again, you can't say enough about the Miller family, because without their support for the last 10 years, we would never have the stories to tell today. So that's all I want to say. Like I said, he's gonna enjoy retirement. He'll yell that a lot at home, but he will be missed, and like I said, Gary can bring him around, and he's enjoying life now. When Gary gets home, he has to get pulled outside because he's gotta take him for the ultimate walk. You agree? So, but thank you, and nothing else to say.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
He thinks you got the -- hold your plaque and let your wife get your picture. Can you zoom in?
Yeah. Okay. Got it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Chief, I'm gonna sneak out that door in case there's a --
You go right ahead.
-- a poor citizen walking in there.
Well, I'll do this to your family. Happy digging, Agbar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys. Okay, item six, discussion regarding website changes.
Hi, Amy.
Oh, there. Well, this is a came on board by the mayor, let me know that there's probably just a few tweaks that needed to be made initially to the website. I wasn't looking to do an overhaul immediately to the website, but we might want to think about that down the road, maybe do a redesign, and there's probably some more functionality we could add to the website, and probably need to boost the economic development component and add some things there. I'd like to add some available sites and buildings, we need to add some things on here with the TIP district, but for right now, we needed to add some things with meeting agendas, and so that's what I did initially, just to get us where we need to be at that level. So, you had been posting your agendas and minutes for the village board, but that was really about it. So you have many other, you know, plan commissions, you have other committees, so I added that, a component for that. So, I didn't go retro and put all those up here, but I think going forward, we definitely want to post any agendas and any minutes that we have for any meetings that are open to the public. I think that's just, you know, fair and common sense, and it's a requirement that we should meet. So, this is your board meeting agendas, and where they're posted and the minutes where they're posted. And we just kind of moved around, those blue bars are your, what are just your main navigation bars, and then when you click on those, you have sub-navigation bars. And so, you have a main navigation of minutes and agendas, and so I just kind of tweaked a little bit and made some reorganization of the sub-navigation. So, we have the board meeting videos, the mayor put together very nicely, and those were kind of a main navigation bar, so I just kind of moved those up and made those a sub-navigation bar underneath the minutes and agendas, because I think logically, they're just a function of your board meeting agendas and minutes. So, I think those would go nicely under there, and people would logically kind of look for those there. So I put those under there. When you click on that link, it takes you directly to YouTube, and then that's where you see all the meeting videos. And so that's where people can go and just watch the videos that are taped here. And so that's nice, and they can see exactly what happens and what takes place, and then the minutes go with that, and they get a lot of information. So, then we have committees. So you have the Committee of the Whole, you have Economic Development Committee, you have all of your, you know, your Public Works Committee, your Public Safety Committee, your Building Committee. Maybe those haven't met a lot yet, but maybe, you know, in the future, they will. That's where those would be posted. And I'll click on those, I'll click on that, there's one there, but it's in the wrong spot. That's how it would look here. They're gonna all be listed there together, and then you'll see, it'll say type, so it'll either be an agenda or a minute. It'll show the name of the committee, so it could be any one of those committees I just mentioned, the date, and then they can click on it, and they can open up and see the material. Right now, we're just getting used to the platform, so you can see that the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's something in there for that, so that shouldn't be there, but it gives you an idea anyway what it'll look like when it's populated. So we have our own sub-navigation bar for the Planning and Zoning Commission, so they'll have their own, it'll look just like that, but it'll just be for just the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they'll have their meeting agendas and their minutes posted here. And for right now, we don't have anything there. We'll move that one there, that you just saw there, to this page, and it'll have all their own. So that's what we were trying to do for the meetings, so we can keep the public informed, and they can see what's taking place, and we'll adhere to the Open Meetings Act with times that we're supposed to get the information out there.
And the meetings will still be posted at the village hall?
Right.
Will still be posted, always are posted at the post office also?
Right. Right. And so, I did miss a few, so like Committee of the Whole, and there was the Christmas Events Committee that I missed, and so we're working with the, and so that one didn't get put online, so Donna pointed that out to me. There's a lot, and so I did talk to the IT people, and those are on there now, so the next one will be put up there. So, in addition to that, we made sure that FOIA, we wanted that to be prevalent, so people could see where that information was, and they could have access to, in case they wanted to make a FOIA request. So that, prior, was a sub-navigation bar under residents, but we do know that not just residents make FOIA requests, so that was not a logical location for the FOIA information to be under, and so it would be difficult for people to find that, and so we pulled that out of the sub-navigation of residents, and we made that an actual navigation bar. So you see FOIA down there, and so if anyone, resident, non-resident, anyone is interested in submitting a FOIA request, then they can just click on the FOIA, and there's the approbation on how they can submit a FOIA, and where it goes to, and what they need to do. So, those are the changes that we made so far on the website, the immediate changes that I felt like we needed to make, and there's a few other just minor tweaks that we made. And maybe down the line, we'll kind of do a major overhaul while we budget for it.
There you go. Good. Any questions, comments?
How soon do the minutes get posted?
Minutes usually will not be posted until they're approved at the following meeting, because they're not official, you know, until they're voted on by whatever, either that committee or that board. So once they're approved, the next month or the next meeting, then they would be put up.
And I noticed they have to pay the garbage bill. Is that, can you do a recurring payment, or is that just a one-time thing that you do?
I don't know, I think it's --
It's just one time, yeah, you can't set it up.
It's through the state of Illinois, so it's not directly through us.
That would be nice.
It would be. It would be. I mean, there's no reason why we can't look into changing it.
Move on to number seven, discussion regarding committee meeting schedule.
I'm just gonna pass these out for you guys. Oh, I need to keep that top one for me. See my questions to myself on that.
Have your notes.
Yes. So, as I mentioned, and this was just kind of a discussion amongst ourselves here about our committees and their committee structure. So you have the Administrative Oversight Committee, the Public Works Committee, Police and Public Safety Committee, Building Committee, Community Development Committee.
Those are the standing committees?
Your standing committees of this board, and I know Donna and I were talking about, you know, how it's kind of been done over the years in different ways, and I just wanted to kind of have a discussion with this board on how you feel like maybe you want to do it going forward, or if you like it the way that it is, where you, I believe now you're having them as needed, or if you would like to have more of a scheduled meetings going forward. And I also wanted to discuss maybe if you were interested in changing committees.
Well, personally, I like the committees the way they are.
Okay, sorry, Mayor.
I set those committees. So I think we're good right there, right now.
Scratch that question.
I'm not giving anybody an option to change at the moment. I think we're good. I personally, I mean, and I've said this before, I would love to see the committees more active, you know, and that's kind of up to the trustees and the chairpeople of those committees to do that. If you're on a committee and you're not meeting, and you feel like you want to meet, then talk to your chairperson, you know. I think trying to set a set meeting just doesn't work with a lot of people's schedules. I think often it's easier for the committee to get together and kind of come up with a day and a time, and then to post it, you know, in the appropriate timely manner, as far as notification goes, but that's just my thought. That's kind of up to the committees.
I just wanted to have a discussion about it, and see what you guys' thoughts are. And I think that since I'm here, you know, I can help with, you know, content, getting it put together, helping you guys meet, whatever you need. So keep that in mind.
I mean, I agree that we should have some regular meetings. I would say, you know, at least every committee should meet at least once a year, at least. I mean, some of, and other times, you know, we meet as needed, like Public Works, you know, we usually meet a couple times in the spring to get, you know, things started, and, you know, maybe some in the fall, but I don't think we need to have meetings, just to have meetings.
And I agree.
Save the taxpayers some money.
No, and I agree with that, but like I said, even like the Building Committee, I know last year, we talked a little bit, there was some conversation about the sheds, you know, and that type of thing, so I think that's something that probably the Building Committee should get together sometime in the near future, because we're coming upon spring, and we're gonna start, you know, probably having people looking outside as opposed to inside. You know, police, you know, that's kind of on an at-need basis, if the police department's got something going on or whatever, and normally, I think the chief talks to the committee if, you know, if he feels like a meeting is needed.
Probably should meet, though, at least once a year, just to...
Oh, absolutely. I would say, I would like to see the committees meet once quarterly at least. I mean, personally, I think that's a good way to keep everybody engaged, keep ideas flowing, you know, keep conversation going, you know, keep the trustees involved. I mean, that's kind of, it's very important, as far as I'm concerned.
How many trustees do you have to have on a committee to have?
Well, there's three on the committee, so two is a quorum.
So two, so somebody can't make it, you know.
Correct. So two would be a quorum.
Amy, in your experience, is quarterly pretty normal?
I mean, that's kind of what I was thinking was quarterly. But if you don't have anything to meet about, I guess there's no reason to meet.
Right, no, exactly. But I think quarterly, you know, we should be able, each committee should have something on their radar.
I would think there's definitely something to discuss quarterly.
Maybe, Amy, that, I mean, if you're involved every day, if you see things, you could make the chairperson aware of what should be, or things that need to be discussed, that we may not be on top of.
Yeah, for sure.
Speaking of which, we need to set up a Public Works Committee meeting, so we gotta come together with the time, because it's about time to figure out sidewalk and street programs.
Right.
So, we can help figure that out for us, okay?
Sure.
We'll go back to, if there's nothing else on that, we're good there. Back to public comment, I think we have Craig Glenn Chut is here with us today from Aqua.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I come to give you an update, it's been a few months since I've been here. Good weather last month.
Yeah, January's meeting was canceled because of the polar vortex, so...
So I got a few things for you. One is a map that I put on your desk, and it shows the, basically the route or the pipeline to bring the softened filtered water from Egyptian Trail to the village. And we'll give you an update on that. First off, two things, it's a two-phase project, and the yellow phase is really like in the town, in the urban area, you know, going through the streets and things like that. And that portion of it is pretty much very close to being done, being engineered and designed. I know that our staff has worked closely with Robinson on that, and I believe they're meeting yet this week to finalize that, and all villagers' comments about where the streets are and where they need to go. So that's going along really good. And the red portion is more of what's gonna be in the agricultural area. That's the area where we had to pick up the easements and so forth, and we have one final remaining easement to acquire, working with the property owner, all very positive, and we'll think of getting that back out really quickly. And once that happens, then Robinson can finish the design on that portion as well. And so what I'm encouraging my staff to accomplish is to have both these in finished design by the end of March, and ready to be permitted from IEPA, and also encouraging them to go to bid at the same time as they go for permitting, so that once we get the permit back in 45 or 60 days, whatever it takes for you to do it, that we already dig, and ready to move forward to start putting it in the ground. So, pretty exciting, moving along pretty nicely, everyone's been very agreeable to working with us and so forth, so just, I'm really hoping that the nice weather arriving coincides with us shoveling around. And we should think about whether or not we want to try to do something for that to help educate folks or let them know more about it. This is a good venue to do that, there might be others that you might be willing to consider about letting them know, get started on that project, so.
Absolutely.
Any other questions about that?
I have a question. Right now, dead ends at Corning Avenue. Am I correct in assuming that when we're gonna shoot over 57 or under 57, we'll go straight down Corning, to the end of the line that you show now?
Well, that's tying into our system there, so that's where we're gonna tie into.
Okay.
So then that makes basically our entire system active. Tell me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
So, they would, when we go on the other side of 57, it would just be an extension, you know, at that point in time. Correct.
Okay. Yep, it'll go, this will make your whole system active, with the new softened water. The wells will remain as backups in the case of an emergency or something like that, but really not really used. The, to update you on that, you mentioned about the I-57 crossing, we're playing engineering team today, and they also have a signed contract with Robinson to design that as well. So that would be, they'll be kicking off the design of that very shortly. In fact, the same team that's working this project is gonna be working that project as well, so that'll be nice. But that'll start as soon as this one here is done, being designed, they'll kick that off. So that's good, too, sign contract to get that engineering up and running. Yeah, this one's ties in at Corning, there's an existing main there, and eventually, as we replace mains throughout town, we'll make a nice loop around town of a larger-sized 12-inch main or something, so that pressure coming in from this way will be able to loop throughout the whole village pretty uniformly. But that'll be something to work on over time, getting the good solid filtered water here first is our first priority.
So what size is this pipe that's marked rural?
This one's a 12-inch. This will be a 12-inch main going from Egyptian Trail into the village, and of course, with your existing storage complement, that'll work out nicely.
When you get into the village, and you talk about new water lines replacing the existing stuff, how big will the water lines be in the village?
Well, it'll be at least 8-inch, because 8-inch is the minimum that we do. And probably 8 to 12, 8, 10, 12, that type of thing, unless there's something comes in a major industry or something that requires something bigger than that, that's the lion's share of what we have going on. Sure, on Egyptian Trail, we got a big 24-inch main, but it's going a long ways, it's going 14 miles. So there's some engineering there with head pressure and friction loss, things like that that make a bigger pipe size advantageous. But in town here, probably 8 to 12, the lion's share.
You may have answered this already, but we're planning a West Corning street program this year, and you guys have looked at that West Corning street to be sure that we're not gonna put in a new street, and we're gonna have to tear it up to put water in there?
Well, we're working with Troy and the folks from the Robinson team, so hopefully we're sharing information on that, but I'll ask tomorrow, when I go back to the office, just to make sure. That's a great question, so I'll find out.
How about the chemical feed? What's that, the polyphosphate?
Oh, so some of this engineering stuff here, possible temporary chemical feed for polyphosphate. So some of the chemicals we use, chlorine, different things like that, if you have to boost them or something, like kind of all the way from Cankey Key, if you have to add up here anywhere, it's a spot where they could maybe add chemicals and stuff that might be advantageous. There's no, probably, there may not even be a reason to be able to do that, but if we have to, they might be able to put something there. Polyphosphate, chlorine, fluoride, those are things that normally we would feed in our system.
Okay. Once you tie this all into ours, where I see, tying into existing dead-end mains?
Yep.
Will that eliminate the need for us to have to flush hydrants?
Well, tying into dead-end mains should, yeah, we bring them together. And I'll have a look at this in here, it looks like it goes a little bit past that dead end, almost, it looks almost like a farm. Is that where you're looking at Corning?
Oh, no, I was looking over at Howard.
Yeah. So that's... Yeah, so that there would be a good example of where, yeah, we tie it together, you shouldn't have to worry about any dead ends anymore, any flushing. But it looks like down in Corning, there still is a little bit of a stub sticking off of there, so over time, we'll try to loop that. But it looks like Corning at this point, it's not part of this project. But anytime you can eliminate a dead end, that's great because dead ends, no matter how good your water quality is, there's always some kind of sediment or something that builds up into dead ends and, you know, flush it. So I'm sure you're doing that already, it's kind of what you're sounding like, what you were doing before we took over. But that raises another good question. I'll go back and ask my team if there are flushing those right now. I'm sure we're working with Jalen, they probably know about that and flushing them. Or we'd be getting phone calls about it.
Any other questions?
When did you say this?
So I want to have the engineering all finished and ready to go to permit at IEPA by the end of March. And IEPA permit can take a couple of months, we want to, we can bid at the same time. And then that way, when the permits come in, we'll be able to start work. So, you know, say 60 days after March, maybe in May or June, hopefully we'd have a date where we can actually start shoveling around, start putting some pipe in the ground. It might start in the village limits sooner than the farm part of it because we're a little bit ahead on that one. That's because we've been able to work closely with the village engineer and get that one headed off. So it's probably going to be in two phases. And I heard today we might even break it into a third phase and divide, divide the red part up into two contractors to expedite it, get that even faster possibly, depending on the bids coming in. But usually the engineers don't like to bid things before we have the permit in hand, IEP makes some changes or things like that. This is a pretty simple project, there aren't a lot of changes to go through. Even if they do, you can also let the contractor, well, they made these changes, what's your view of price to make a change? Not a big deal. So I think it's worth it to do it at the same time so that we can get the softened water faster.
So if you start in June, how long does a project like this take?
You know, I would say, I don't know, I think if we break it up, I think if one contractor had the whole red part, I don't know, maybe a month or so or 45 days. And I'm a little optimistic on that, get rain days, depending on your summer goes. But I would think by the end of summer, we'd have some softened water here. If everything goes well, I would get that.
End of summer?
I would hope so. And when I come next month and we've gotten a little bit further down the track and eventually started to go out and talk to contractors, I'd give you a better idea than whether to go right now, is get things permitted and get a bid out and see what people have to say about that.
As far as billing, pricing, changing whenever the valve is flowing, is that what you...
No, it's actually January of 2020.
2020 or connection?
No, not, or connection. If it's not here by January of 2020, then the rates hold until it's here.
Whichever's later.
But if it's, yes.
I always remember the connection, yeah.
Yeah, it's whichever's later. But we definitely want to get the water up here, you know, our residents are enjoying that high-quality water, the softened water. And I think for us, operationally, it'll be nice too, so that we can build out the band in the wells, so we can put it on standby mode. I think that'll be good for us too, so I think it'll be for everybody.
So is there any, is there any disruption in service when you open the valve? I mean, does bringing in your water, you know, any, you know, sediment gets flushed out or something, or, I mean, do residents going to have to be aware of anything?
Yeah, we're actually, Kevin Culver, who's also a resident, Kevin, who's around Corning, he spent the latter part of last year doing a plan, a transition plan with communication things, stuff that we would let residents know, here's what to expect, here's what's going to happen next, we're going to do this. And there will have to be quite a bit of flushing because the water's used to always going the same way now. And we're going to change that. We're going to send water from a different way than it came from before. And so it's going to stir some things up. But done with the right treatment process, done with the right communications process and flushing, it's not, I think we haven't done before. In fact, we just did it in University Park a couple of years ago. It went really smooth up there. Just a lot more planning has to go into it, just opening a valve. I'd say you spent the latter part of last year working on a program to do the transition to the folks here, it'll just be a few messages here and there, but there's a lot that goes into it. Study, study about changing the water source. Changing water source is a big deal today, right? It's always in the news, people changing water sources and that. So a lot of chemical composition stuff goes into it, but we're well prepared for that. And probably, you know, we started getting down towards construction timeline, that's probably something I'll probably share, do some of the communication stuff and what we're going to do. So we can go a little closer. One of the things we did, we switched over the water north up here, as we did some nice colored flyers and brochures explaining about the water change, what to expect, and the difference in the water quality. And we're lining up to do that same type of thing, direct mail to the resident, nice colored things, so they kind of open it up and look at it, you know, and that's something just discarded. So, but more of that will come as we get closer. Good? Any questions on that? More questions? Okay, so that's kind of it on the pipeline project. And again, like I mentioned, we're starting the other project, starting engineering to go across the interstate, there'll be more information coming up ahead. In addition, meter replacements, so I got an update from our team and we did 250 already this year, a very short amount of time, like last month. And then we're trying to get another 300 done by the end of this year. So like 550 this year, a couple of what we did last year, by the end of this year, I guess what I'm trying to say is we've changed over two-thirds of the entire village to new water meters and hopefully more accurate readings and that type of thing. So more to come on that. Get any feedback on it, questions, comments, anything like that, let me know. So far, it's been going pretty good, it's been pretty quiet. And I know you had the meter change done at your house, and Mike, I know you've had some at your house too, so I'm hoping that they're all good stories like that. And if there's anything that comes up that's concerned, please let me know.
So if you didn't get a letter, does that mean you don't need an exchange?
Correct. Yeah, it must be one of the new meters. And we, a five-eighths meter, we change them every 10 years, or unless something goes wrong or breaks or something. If you have a three-quarter inch meter, they're by statute every six years. So what we do is look at the ones, number one that are having issues with weed or whatever the case may be, and look at the ones that are aged and change those. And if you haven't got a letter of meters, it's probably, either getting a still break of weed and there's no problems there or it's within that 10-year period. And then the last thing I had on my list was the hydro replacements. So Brian O'Keefe, our distribution manager, is working closely with the fire chief, trying to outline what we're going to do in the fire hydro replacements this year. So that'll be happening in the summer times, so we'll be able to listen to that going on the town. We'll probably bring an update on where those are at, you know, at a future meeting once they nail down. He told me that they don't have the exact locations identified yet, but they're working together to find out where those are, what they need. So we'll work on that. Couple water main breaks since the last time I met with you, couple service replacements. So things going pretty smooth, grants to you things, at least from my perspective, what I'm here. If you hear something different, please let me know.
How about billing questions, like issues with like a lot of water usage? I mean, do you hear a lot of issues with that? I had a neighbor that had some issues and it sounded like it maybe took a little more time to resolve than...
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Well, if I said we never had issues like that, I wouldn't be telling you the truth. We do have issues like that. But I do like to think that we worked through them pretty quickly and get them resolved. But if you hear otherwise, please let me know.
Okay.
I'll address the question, I'll find out.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, where utility business things happen, things break and people will put a number sometimes where it flip-flops or something and it causes someone an issue, hopefully we react pretty quickly and swiftly to that. So it won't be an issue for customers.
Okay.
Again, if there's something different, please let me know. Any other Aqua-related questions, anything I can do for you? No?
Well, appreciate it, thank you.
All right, well, I'll be back, Kevin, next month. You need something, I can hang around or...
No, I don't think so. That's good.
All right, well, thanks for the time.
Thank you. Nope, thank you for coming, appreciate it. All right, any other public comment? Any general discussion?
Do we have any water main breaks during that vortex deal?
Not that I'm aware of, not that I've heard.
I hadn't seen anybody working on it. When's the fire department going to start their new station?
As far as I know, right now, that's on hold.
Oh?
Yeah, that's back on hold from what I understand.
Anything you can talk about why?
I think it's just basically budgetary. I mean, that's kind of what they're, I'm not sure, I'm not, I haven't really had a discussion about it. I think it's on hold. Anything else? Oh, email.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I passed out little sheets to you. I wanted to just make sure that you had, you know, access, if you were all using your emails. I know that a few of the two trustees that didn't have emails have emails now. And if the rest of you, that we email you your packet, right, Donna? I don't want to speak for you, but I do believe that's in, so I want to make sure that you knew that. And do you, have you all changed your passwords? That's the password we have on file, so I don't know if you've changed them or you haven't, that's what they are on there.
Well, to be honest, I mean, I never, the only thing, I just have them forwarded by personal email, so. Or is that, do you send the packet to my personal email or do you send it to this?
I don't know what that is.
It's not, it'd be the TR.
The TR, yeah, TR is where I send it.
Okay, so I have that automatically forwarded, so.
Okay.
I mean, assuming I don't get, I'm not getting any other emails.
I would assume if you did, they would come, they would come that way.
If you get any there, they'll all forward to your, yeah, so you can all do that forward to your personal.
Right.
Anything else? If not, a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole?
Motion?
Motion by trustee Ham, second by trustee Jones.
Ham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.